Morning, everybody.
Morning.
All righty, today is May the 23rd. It's about nine oh five AM. This is regular beating Liberty County Commissioners Court call this meeting in order. Commissioner Korbowski is here, Commissioner Arthur's here, Commissioner Wilson's here by way of Zoom. Commissioner Whitmire is out. He had knee surgery, so he's limping right now. So y'all keep him in your prayers if you would please. So if y'all would, let's all stand. Lee is going to lead us in the ladies chairs and lead us in the invocation this morning.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands by the election and by liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United City of Texas, one state under God, one in the east.
Frankly, please, dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for all the things that you do for us, Lord. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord. Thank you for the opportunities that you give us. Lord, I ask that you be with the judges, the commissioners as we go through court today and make decisions that affect the county. Lord, I ask you give them the wisdom to do the things that you would have them do during all things that we do that are good, Lord. We give you the glory and honor forward, Lord. Lord, I ask you forgive us when we fall short. I'm mindful, Lord, of those lost loved ones, and Lord, especially mindful of Melvin Hunt's family and the passing of him as the county commissioner here and the teacher of the Cleveland area. Lord, be with that family and comfort them in the way that you can. Be with us as we go through this meeting. Your son Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Lee. All righty. Next item up is notices and proclamations. Well, no proclamations today, y'all, and no notices. Bless Lee. You have any notices? She got nothing yet.
Well, as far as the election went, we had a runoff in Cleveland and a possible reelection in Fund Grove. There seems to be some issue with that one, and so I'm kind of waiting, but it looks like the runoff will be. The election day will be June 24th. The early voting will be the week or so before that. There won't be any early voting on June 19th. That's where it sits right now. I'm still waiting for final information from the two city councils, but that's what it looks like. We have a runoff and a possible redo if they don't agree to flip a coin or somebody doesn't drop out.
Does it appear that they have any issue with that, or what are your recommendations for them?
They might after West Side's commission meeting, a council meeting, but I'm still working on that. I will be talking to Matt today, but if things go accordingly, both city councils should have a runoff redo election in that timeframe, but it's. Cleveland for sure. Fund Grove still in the process of being decided.
Okay, it's good enough. Thank you much, and thank you for the job y'all did. That was splendid considering it was in short notice. Yes. Public comments. We do have one this morning. Laverne Green, are you here?
Yes.
Hey, come on up. How you doing this morning? And Laverne, you're with Legacy?
Yes, Legacy's in C.
Okay.
And we're representing in Texas housing assistance program.
Okay. So what does acronym CDC stand for?
Community Development.
Okay, just for the record, I'd need to get it out here, so it looks. Thank you. I'll say one for Commissioner. Wilson. Yeah, okay. Good deal. Oh, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Basically, what we're doing, Texas has been given like eight million dollars by federal government for homeowners that have been affected with COVID and that have fallen behind on their property taxes or their mortgages or just need assistance for utilities. And so we're trying to get the word out to everyone about the program and that they can apply as a free bill. It's free money. It's $65,000 grant that they can get. And the qualifications are you have to be affected by COVID or you have $90,000 income for the household, which most people don't even make that much money. So this program is here. Liberty County, we looked up the census for Liberty County, we only have 157 people that have applied for this program. This program been over a year for the program. So we're trying to get the word out because there are a lot of people that's in about foreclosures of their homes. They're about to lose their homes because the pandemic, when everybody was laid off. So there's money out there available for people. So we're trying to get that word out to each county and so we can get the assistance. Now Liberty County has over a million dollars that they can apply for assistance for Liberty County, and they haven't tapped into their funds yet. So that's why I'm here to try to help and see if we can get the county to help me spread the word.
Okay, so those funds will be administered by your group and not by the county, so.
The funds will be administered by the state, the state of Texas, Texas Assistance Program. That's where the funds will be administered from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good deal. So all you gotta do is call this number or log on and talk to somebody, let them know you need help.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Yeah.
How easy is that?
It's really easy, and then I'm here to help them navigate through the process.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll help them apply for the services. And what we need from the county, if we get like just maybe in each precinct, go and do a public meeting in each precinct so people can be aware of it.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming to that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next item up is declare conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict of interest today? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everybody had an opt-in looking over. Any questions? Any reason to move any of these particular items to the regular agenda for discussion and potential vote?
Any additions we have?
One addition. I have a reimbursement to add to Nick Dennis. The amount is $899.98. I have an add-on by payable to just before 8613.
Along with the agenda, make the motion to approve some agenda.
All right, got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve with the additions.
And 8613.
For 8613, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, guys, who made the motion?
Bruce.
Bruce, the second.
Leon.
Okay.
All right, good deal. Oh, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. On to the regular agenda. Number eight, one, Ms. Harris. Consider approve that Prosperity Bank Depository Bid Application has the binding contract between Liberty County and Prosperity Bank for a period of two years beginning June the first, 2023, and expiring May 31st, 2025. Kim?
Yes, so I put this on the agenda just to commemorate the fact that the bid submitted by Prosperity Bank will be the contract and it will be for that timeframe. Just to confirm that we have that that is the contract. March on the floor, Prosperity Bank is here today. Any questions from her? She's very happy to answer any question.
Marsha, you want to come up and say hello? All right, how are you?
Thank you. Anybody have a question? We know. I took caution to note that we Prosperity Bank have longstanding relationship with the county. Look forward to continuing.
Mighty fine.
We know where to find me. Just talk to me.
It's not far to walk over there, I guarantee.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Thank you.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise nay. Thank you. If that motion carries, thank you. Number two from Ms. Harris, consider approve MetLife's ongoing failure to provide any 2023 invoice. Liberty County and take action on future business relationship with MetLife. It's pretty selfish, but it's.
Yes, so the county attorney's office was handed out a letter to MetLife to say, look, you know, we've got problems. I had not heard back from MetLife. I don't believe that the county attorney's office has heard back from that letter as we solved that letter. And we still have no invoice for 2023. And they did this week say that they would like to have a weekly settlement call in at us to try to get their problems resolved, but you know, we can't create an invoice again. So to date, we have collected the premium payments from our employees. They have not been submitted to MetLife for 2023 because they cannot produce an invoice for us. So I want the court to be aware of this problem, you know, so that if we have any future problems, you know, we're going. I'll be on board with that there is a big problem here. So also, I can recommend that we continue any relationship with MetLife going into 2024. We've got to start looking into the insurance for next year because of it, because of other problems, and because we know that they have failed to pay claims in the past. So I just want to, I don't know that there's anything that you actually need to vote on, but I just make you aware that there is one going. That life. Yes, sir.
I understand, you know, what's taking place here, but do you see where we could possibly go out for some other offers of this form of insurance for the employees?
Sure, you know, there are multiple companies that do this sort of insurance. So, you know, that's something that the court can move forward with or RFPs for 2024, and Harold can help you on that.
Would you check on that for me, please?
Sure, Harold can give those guys, but you know, this would be sort of like the Aflac, but we've had problems, you know, with Aflac in the past too. So, but you know, I'm sure there are other things that now I'm not aware whether TAC offers any kind of supplemental insurance policies, but that, you know, that may be an avenue that we could check on as well. I know that Orlando is in the area this week and he's supposed to stop our office one day this week, and then we can talk to him about, you know, any supplemental coverage that they may offer. But again, I cannot recommend that we go with MetLife anywhere.
Who is the agent of it?
Um, we have a lady that we talked to. Her name is Larissa Pollard, and she's not around here. Now, I think the big part of the problem is because we had this MetLife coverage through Gallagher, and when we had plans source, the payment to MetLife was being created and processed through our plans source platform. And when we didn't wait with plans source, then we moved to, you know, our regular bill. We went from a self-bill status to our regular invoice status, and they have not made that transition for us. And Gallagher's out of the picture, so they're not able to assist with that. And so we just continue to try to get an invoice from them and have to look.
Thank you.
Matthew, would you? I would think we need to have some kind of action on this.
You could move to have the trade response in minutes.
Okay.
You don't really have to do anything other than do it.
I'd like to do that. That way it is on record. Bruce, Greg, or Leon? Anybody want to make a motion in that regard?
I didn't quite understand what you mean.
So a motion to, you know, employ the tragic songs in the minutes regarding this guy. That's all.
Oh, I'll show you.
Hallelujah.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Lee, you got that?
I'm great.
All righty. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. As they say in Mexico, it's demasiado tarde para eso. It's a little late for MetLife. Okay. All righty, number three, Commissioner Korbowski, consider an approved proposal for Mire Mc Dow construction incorporated for the framing and preparing for STUCO and install STUCO of existing framing and the cleanup, the removal of construction debris for the canopy at the probation office. So the windows above were.
Yes, this was all behind the old oning that was approved in commission for it to be replaced. This is extra above beyond what they bid. It'll be an $3,000 for them to seal those windows up.
How much?
$3,000. For them to finish that work and prepare it for the new oning that's coming.
All right. Angela, Matthew.
This certainly put us all pity. Right, yeah.
This is, I'm per se.
Yes.
Okay, all right. What's court's pleasure?
No, we're approved.
A motion from Greg to approve.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four from Ms. Salday, consider an approved preliminary plat for Moss Ranch Section One. LJ Engineering has reviewed and approved. Melinda, you want to tell us where Moss Ranch is?
Honestly, I have not physically been to Moss Ranch myself yet. I'm still getting all of everybody together.
Yeah.
But LJ did do the review of the preliminary plat and have.
Well, it must be pretty bossy.
I couldn't understand it.
Come on up.
Melinda, where's it located at?
I'm not sure where this moss is. I haven't been to all of the divisions yet. Are you? You said a plat here.
Scott, you want to tell us about Moss Ranch? Because it must be close to Moss Hill.
It is not. It's actually about a half mile from my house.
Okay.
It's on the old very top there.
Okay.
On.
Macedonia Cut Off.
Uh, it's on 2022, 2278, 2274, which is my road, and then 2285.
Okay.
Three, three roads, and that it's a couple. So here's 117 acres. And used to be the old there.
Yeah, on the left as you're heading that way.
Yes.
All right, well, LJ has reviewed and approved. What's court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Scott. Number five from Ms. Salday is consider an approved final plat for Santa Fe Village Section One. LJ has reviewed and approved this as well. So Melinda?
Yes, it's a, the Santa Fe Village is inside the Santa Fe subdivision. This is actually going to be a little bit different than their other subdivisions surrounding it. But it's going to be four section eventually. Yeah, take like four sections eventually for a little small village, kind of like a curb and getter.
Make motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six from Ms. Salday is consider and approve accepting the White Oak Trail Section Six. End of the county's two-year maintenance period. They have addressed the items on the punch list, and LJ Engineering completed their inspection and recommended their acceptance. Leon, you had a chance to, that's in your area, right?
Sure is. They've fixed all the flaws and it looks good. I make the motion where you tap.
Second.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce to accept. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, well, we're swearing you out today, Melinda.
I'm not.
Yeah. Consider approve payment to LJ Engineering amount of $56,165 for wastewater engineering services for the city of Argus be paid out of ARPA funds. Angela, any question? Any?
No, we're good.
We're good. Okay, any questions? Entertainer motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda. There you go, all right. Next is number eight from Linebarger, consider approve the bids on the deliquant tax properties as follows. Flores, $5,500. Tarrina, $19,161.63. Tarrina, again, $6,729.42. Another Tarrina, $5,490.60. Berry, $5,973. Tarrina, travis, $7,014.38. Lane for $11,000. Tarrina for $1,000, and rolled on for $2,000. Anybody had a chance to look these over?
Yes.
And any input?
I'm not seeing anything wrong with any. I do have a question on number eight. Says total taxes due to original taxes due. What's, what's the, you know, this, this tax to pay always due to the costs? So the person has paid the taxes, that's current taxes, that's, that, yeah. They all look good. That's the only place in my head. I make a motion to approve all nine of them.
Got a motion to approve from Bruce.
There.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Leon, nothing? Okay. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine from Mr. Dennis. I see you back here in the corner, buddy. Come on up.
Yes, sir.
Consider approve the easy 365 software manager annual license. See if we can make this easy, right?
Exactly. Right, yes, this. How many people have passwords? Exactly, right?
Yeah.
We have a billion of them.
Yeah.
So the project scope of this is something I'm excited about is hopefully to unify into a single sign-on situation. So we have a bunch of applications, Tyler, Motorola Lock Guard. We have all these different sign there. Setting this environment up will allow us to unify and have one login for our email or Tyler application and stuff like that that helps. Not only with security, but also we just peace of mind knowing we don't have to know 15,000 different passwords. So Tyler's definitely recommending we move this specifically to the department link for them per applications. The annual cost is what you mentioned, and that is just for the software management that once we do implement this, it's another way of managing how I create the users, the accounts, and tie everything together. But it's definitely something I'm excited about and so forward to helping it implemented if we can, just to alleviate some of these 5,000 logins that we have and stuff like that. But the monthly software or the annual, the yearly software cost is $1,050 every year. The scope of the project with that one annual price in there comes to $10,897. And I was hoping to pull this out of my department's budget to get this going, but it's just the annual renewal I needed. So this will be a larger middle and tag. Yes, yes. So our on-premise active directory, which is already here and stuff like that, will implement with Azure Active Directory, which is part of our 0365 tenant cloud. So those will be things. So when you log in, you don't have to additionally log into your email as well. It's picked out, it unifies. But this sets us up for down the road with any other applications where you log in, you can log into your Tyler application. So this will get Tyler to have a specific Tyler program at the moment. I have to look into the Odyssey or the parallels client, stuff like that, but we have to have this implemented in our environment so then we can start adding those different single sign-on features. That's correct. Sorry. That's what that is.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Leon. Any further discussion?
Nick?
Yes.
Hi, Nick.
Yes, sir.
What do you think about that course last week?
Okay, that was awesome. That I thoroughly enjoyed going. Very educational, definitely mind-opening, and lots of stuff I've got on the books to get us updated on for sure, but it was a wonderful conference.
It opened my eyes on a lot of things.
Yes, sir. Did you, did you listen to any of the AI talk?
Yeah.
No one's ready. No one's ready for AI. I can tell you that much.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Yeah, when it started getting trucks and cars to drive themselves, it's the AI thing. It's kind of stupid. If I ever drive a Tesla off a cliff, I know I'll make it. Okay. All right, number 10, consider and approve bridge replacement at Middle Road at Galore Creek. The Naver Construction Investment and Jobs Act, which was signed into law in November 2021, included a significant apportionment for funding off-system bridge projects. Focuses on replacing bridges that are in or near poor condition. This bridge definitely qualifies for 100% federal funding. Through that program, this is a text dot issue in conjunction with the county.
Where's this road looking at?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. C is up next. Number 11, consider and approve recommendation to award bid number 23-14 for a chip spreader, Rowden Bridge One.
We went out for sale bids for a used chip spreader. We received one back. It is an ALCO for $130,000. $130,000. You should have all this in your email. Listen to this one.
Make a motion. We approve.
Yeah, a motion Leon, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 12, accept and acknowledge payment and performance bonds in the amount of $5,796. I wonder if it's 50 cents or 50 cents and.
Five million, seven, ninety-six, five.
Oh, man, I'm looking. Okay, thank you. I'm just trying. I'm trying to help Angela. I'm worried about Angela. She going short out there, okay? Five million, 796,504 dollars from Vulcan Materials Asphalt Construction LLC for term contract for asphalt overlay.
This has already been awarded, but this is just to put it in the minutes in the record that we did receive their performance and payment bonds when they were required. So don't just accept them. All you need to do.
Anything, Matthew, on that? We're good?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13, Mr. C, considering approve recommendation to award bid number 2311, construction of a metal building and equipment shed utilizing off-the-punch Rowden Bridge One. Is this the one out on 1409?
This is on the 1409. We received five bids. The lowest was Myron McDowell. The only, only problem, this is American Rescue Plan money, and Angela and I discussed this morning, and my recollection from Grant Works is they have to. they have to re-register with SANA before we award a contract. They've started the process, they haven't completed it. So I think we need to hold off on this until.
You want to table this one?
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second Leon to table. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries to table. Okay, number fourteen from Mr. C, consider approved recommendation to award bid number twenty-three twelve, construction of supply building at the Hardtail Building utilizing ARPA funds. That's pretty self-explanatory. We need this, so.
Yeah, we received six bids, the uh lowest was Mike Morner at Construction out of, I think, Omot. And they have registered with SANA. Uh, you'll see the model, if y'all approve this, uh, there's a payment percentages they'd like to see. Uh, thirty percent, thirty, you know, at different stages of completion. If y'all would approve those two. Uh, they put on here seventy days after arrival of the bidding. And so, you know, how it is to get the the building and get the materials in, who knows? I don't know.
This is a hundred and twenty by hundred and twenty foot building behind a hard hill to be utilized as uh emergency storage for equipment coming in during disasters and hurricanes and stuff like that.
Yeah, they'll be with three sixty-two, three hundred.
Make a motion to approve.
There you go. Yeah, a motion from Bruce, second from Greg.
Okay, tell me which one you're, because it's not in the thing up here, so which one are you approving?
Basically. This one.
Mike Morner, yeah, okay. I wanted to make sure it's hit it for the record.
All right, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's put the building up there. No bathrooms, no showers, right?
Yep.
It's children, okay. Uh, number fifteen. Consider and approve return of private property to the owner's family that was left in the Chambers of Commerce Building. That's pretty self-explanatory. I'm sure they moved out and there were some things that were left.
There was an old, there was an old desk there, uh, uh, pretty bad shape, but I think the owner of the building, whenever they sold it to the Chamber of Commerce, left the desk in there for Mary and the youth. And the kids were kind of like having back there with their father.
Yeah. Any issue, Matthew? Nope. All right, what's court's pleasure?
Move.
Move, uh, Leon, was that a motion?
Yes.
And Greg, was that a second? Any further discussions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen. Consider and approve payment of invoice number FY twenty twenty-three point one oh five in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Regional Public Fender for capital cases. Liberty County's fiscal year twenty twenty-three or local allocation. Those, I want y'all to really consider to do this, okay, because we don't want to get in the same shape as another county I know of that looking at five capital cases, potentially a million dollars a case plus. Uh, Matthew, you have anything to liken something with this?
No, nothing uh other than uh uh urge that y'all pass it. This is more or less an insurance contract.
Yes.
If and when we ever get a capital case that the that the District of Tennessee offices uh decides to, it will do the death penalty on, this will kick in. Uh, the uh typical death penalty defense is probably going to be three quarters of a million to a million, something like that. So for forty thousand dollars an year, we don't have to suffer that long.
Yeah.
Highly encouraging.
I make the motion we approve.
Second.
Motion Leon, second from Greg. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen. Discussion potential action shall occur regarding approval of the filing in the official minutes of the Commissioners Court of the following, the fully executed and complete instruments approved by the Commissioners Court on May first, twenty twenty-three. A Economic Development Program Agreement executed by and between Liberty County, Texas and Liberty County Solar Project LLC with its effective date being May fourth, twenty twenty-three. And the access agreement executed by and between Liberty County, Texas and Liberty County Solar Project LLC with its effective date being May fourth, twenty twenty-three. This just puts it in the record, Matthew, is that correct?
That's correct, but I know, you know, Chuck's been doing the heavy lifting on this. We've been unable to get him uh right for this morning, so we would actually let's put it uh, put this on the next agenda if not a uh, you know, any.
It's not a time sensitive.
Uh, it it may be, and if if we find out that it is, I'll come back and ask for uh, especially, but I uh, I very much want Chuck here on on this issue.
Okay, so you asking the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
There you go. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That, but and we will table that and revisit. Number eighteen. I'm going to read this, and I'm going to ask, we go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay. So, and rating is consideration of authorizing the county judge or other authorized officials to execute the settlement participation and release forms regarding settlement offers in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of County of Liberty versus Purdue Pharma Incorporated at all. NDL pre-trial calls number twenty eighteen dash six-three-five-eight-seven in the hundred and fifty-seven district, hundred and fifty-second District Court of Harris County, Texas. So with that being read, I would ask you, going to executive session at this time, I need a motion and a second, and I'll go to this. Was that a, Leon, was that a motion, okay?
There you go.
Second from Greg, got a motion, yeah, I'm saving Greg. All favor say aye.
Aye.
And it is now ten forty nine forty-eight. Ninety-five. All right, we're out of uh executive session, back in regular session. The item on the agenda was a consideration of authorizing the county judge or other authorized officials to execute the settlement participation, release forms regarding settlement offers in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of Liberty County versus Purdue Pharma Incorporated at all. NDL pre-trial calls number is twenty eighteen dash six-three-five-eight-seven in the hundred and fifty-seven District Court of Harris County, Texas. And of course, our executive session was held under um, well, government code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, which is consultation with attorney. So as I said, it's ten oh four, out of executive session, back in regular session. With that all being said, what is the court's pleasure at this time?
Making motion to approve uh authorization of the county judge or other authorized officials to execute.
A motion from Bruce.
There you go.
Second from Leon, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Bruce to adjourn. Second Leon, all favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.